I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Rattone City Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, please, Desiree?
Sure. Mayor Sigata.
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, May 11th, 6:00 p.m., here in the chambers. We do have a notice of a potential quorum tonight. A quorum of the Rattone Water Board and Rattone Public Service Board of Directors may attend the presentation of the fiscal year 20 approved audit reports by Carr, Riggs, and Ingram at the Rattone City Commission meeting. Oh, that's to be held May 11th, not tonight. Okay. So, the next meeting in the City Commission chamber is located here. We have three proclamations tonight. First on the docket is Behavioral Health Awareness Month, May 2021. Lawrence?
Okay. Behavioral Health Month, May 2021. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from behavioral health services from seeking help, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, does James Neil Sigata Jr., Mayor of the City of Rattone, New Mexico, hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Behavioral Health Month and urges all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Rattone to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the needs for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. In witness whereof, he has set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Rattone to be affixed this 27th day of April 2021. I don't know if we have anyone here to accept this?
No, we don't.
Okay.
All righty. Thank you. Next proclamation is Drinking Water Week, May 2nd through 8th, 2021. Commissioner Chavez.
My proclamation for the Drinking Water Week from May 12th, May 2nd to May 18th. Whereas water follows a natural cycle from earth to air to earth again, and whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas water is a basic and essential need for every living creature, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any member of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we all are stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and the citizens of Rattone should have a safe, dependable supply of water now and into the future. And therefore, does James Neil Sigata, the Mayor of Rattone, hereby proclaim May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Drinking Water Week. And the city of Rattone urges all citizens to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set his hand to conceal, caused the seal of the city of Rattone to be affixed this 27th day of April 2021. James Neil Sigata.
I think Terry's here, and some water boys are here.
All right, you guys. Who are those masked men?
Thanks, guys.
Mayor, if I could just comment that, you know, drinking water is something that we really take for granted. We're just used to turning on the tap, and there it is, and we trust it every time, and there's as much as we want to use there, but it doesn't happen by accident. These gentlemen here are really focused on the community's drinking water every day, every minute of every day, and it's a big job. And with surface water, you have a lot of variability, so these gentlemen are always training on the latest regulations and methods of treating Rattone's water. We've always had good water. It's never been better than it is right now, but I do want to recognize their efforts. This is something we take for granted, and we should be very thankful that we have the quality of water that we have in Rattone.
Absolutely. Appreciate what you guys do.
We do.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, one more. Municipal Clerks' Week, May 2nd through May 8th, 2021. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, now, therefore, do I, James Neil Sigata Jr., Mayor of the City of Rattone, New Mexico, recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Municipal Clerks' Week, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk, Michael Ann Antonucci, Deputy Clerk Desiree Trujillo, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Rattone to be affixed this 27th day of April 2021. Ladies?
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
And Mayor, if I could, there, I would just comment that municipal operation is only as good as the administrative office here, and we are especially strong there. We've got a great team in the office, and again, maybe we take that for granted because we just don't have a lot of the issues that, you know, a lot of municipalities struggle with, and it doesn't happen by accident. Again, we've got true professionals working in there, so I think this is important.
Absolutely, and that, you know, remember, last year's Clerk of the Year, Michael Ann Antonucci, so.
Hey, again, remember that, guys.
So, we appreciate everything you guys do for us.
Very much. Thank you.
All right. At this time, moving on to item five, committed reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay. On April 5th, I participated in the Fisher Peak State Park Master Plan Interest Groups discussion for New Mexico stakeholders. There were three representatives from New Mexico in attendance, myself, Sugar Creek Canyon State Park Superintendent Robert McGuyver, and New Mexico State Park Area Director Jared Lenninger. This is one of 15 different special interest groups regarding input for the development of the master plan for Fisher Peak. I shared Rattone's perspective as landowners and partners with New Mexico State Parks and Colorado Parks and Wildlife, as well as our desire for economic development related to outdoor recreation resources. I also discussed our desire to connect Rattone to both state parks via active transportation trails. We also discussed trail connectivity and continuity from a visitor's perspective. There were several issues identified for visitors who would be in one park and cross the straight state line into the other, related to things like fee structure, allowable activities, and dogs. In terms of our concerns, I discussed watershed integrity and fire suppression. The overall takeaway was a need between Colorado and New Mexico for ongoing communication, connecting trails, and consistent messaging and access guidelines. One idea we had was to have unified messaging at visitor centers on both sides of the state line regarding recreating responsibly and using leave-no-trace principles. It was agreed that moving forward, it would be a good thing to have more city and county representatives from the New Mexico side giving input. There's also a need for involvement from higher-level decision-makers from New Mexico State Parks and CPW, just because, you know, your superintendent can't change fee structures or, you know, negotiate that with Colorado, so getting some higher-level decision-makers would be good. We were also asked to share any trail planning documents we had, so I sent them the bike path plan that you and I met up together. And again, additional information can be found at fisherpeakstatepark.com, and that's the best resource to have the correct information about what's open and what kind of access there is. For the New Mexico Municipal League, on April 16th, I attended the district meeting along with several others on the commission and manager Barry. League Director A.J. Forti went over the 2021 legislation affecting municipalities, which can be found in a report on their website. On April 20th, I chaired the District 3 election meeting, and I was re-elected as the League District 3 Director and will serve in that position through April of 2023, and our next board meeting will be in June. The Colfax County Senior Citizens Board, on April 20th, I attended that meeting, and they are working on policies related to reopening centers when it's allowable in our county. The window replacement project is almost complete. The numbers for the home delivery and grab-and-go meals remain strong, and the Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging Program Assessment began today for the Rattone Senior Center, and their next board meeting is scheduled for May 18th. This one's a little longer. The North Central New Mexico Economic Development Department met on April 23rd. The annual audit was presented and approved. There were no new findings, and several past issues, they've had some troubles, have been cleared up, and overall, things are looking a lot better than they were a couple years ago. The audit is now public and should be linked to their website. Colfax County Commissioner Brett Ware was appointed to the board to replace former Commissioner Lynn and Newton. In addition, they nominated, or they added Mary Lou Kern, appointed as an alternate for Jessica Barfield, who is the current Colfax County Economic Development Representative. There is still a vacancy remaining in the at-large position for the Colfax County on the board, and I believe the county takes care of that position. Numerous other matters of business were discussed and approved, including a budget adjustment where some federal administrative funds were being reallocated to, for the AAA providers. Normally, they wouldn't do this kind of thing with their funding, but with the unique times because of COVID, the director felt this was better than remitting the funds back to the federal government, so they're reallocating that a one-time-only thing. They have a new staff member, Kenny Penn, and he is helping the region interpret and understand the American Rescue Plan and will be a key point of contact for broadband projects, especially with the passing of House Built-in, which created a broadband development division at the state level. Also, another new staff member who came from DOT, Paul Sidik, I think, is how you say it. He is working with Lisa Sadio as the new transportation planner, and Lisa is looking at retirement pretty soon, so that's going to be a big change there. They talked a little bit about the EDA and the $3 billion that's out there for grants, and North Central stressed that these projects should be larger regional projects, and so Kenny Penn is the point of contact for the EDA and is compiling a list for our region to see how best combined and achieves successful awards, and Mr. Barry told me they are already in contact about the things that we're looking at. Several reports were given on finances, the non-metro AAA and community development. They continue to assist with workforce housing in Colfax County, that's a big project, and this area will also be a pilot project for a HUD program regarding older adults having home modifications, which I know our senior centers are going to help out with that. They wanted everyone to know that Working Now loan funds are still available. These loans are set aside to help small businesses affected by the pandemic with expenses like payroll, rent, inventory marketing, e-commerce development, personal protective equipment, and small capital improvements, along with technical assistance for the life of the loan. There is a Supporting Recovery and Economic Resilience Workshop coming up on May 6th at 1:00. It kind of goes along with our Behavioral Health Month. It's going to discuss recovery for individuals with substance use disorders through physical and mental health services and generation-specific programs, and they'll have breakout sessions such, on topics such as service coordination, employment, and housing. Everything I'm mentioning, I posted on my commission Facebook page because there were a lot of links and dates and times, so if anyone's interested, you can go there, which is public, or you can just contact me. They are going to have a small business basics training that they said is going to be face-to-face that should come to Rattone after the next few months, so when things kind of normalize. On April 30th, at 10:00, they're having an accessing Census Bureau data for local governments meeting, just to kind of offer that to anyone in the district. The highlight of after the business part of the meeting, Kelly Bierchmidt, the Deputy Director of Operations for Los Alamos National Laboratory, gave a special presentation to the group. She talked about how Lannell has a huge impact on New Mexico's economy and is growing and expanding rapidly, including adding offices in Santa Fe for 600 employees, and they're increasing their workforce. He said they really do try to hire in New Mexico. Forty-one percent of their new hires are from New Mexico. And due to COVID, they're piloting a new completely work-from-home program, and so they, people have given up their offices, especially people who live in Albuquerque when not, who could. And then they also have a hybrid work-from-home and lab combo, and then they have just the people who have to stay on the hill. So, they said that, you know, that they've made a lot of changes that have been really good for their workforce. He also highlighted an opportunity for local economic development. There's a program that they participate in which provides New Mexico small businesses facing technical challenges access to unique expertise and capabilities of Los Alamos and Sandia Labs. At no cost to the business, small businesses can seek assistance from lab scientists and engineers to solve challenges and overcome barriers to company success. So, you get some free science if you qualify for this program from one of the labs, which is pretty cool. I guess since 2000, they've provided 71.7 million in technical assistance to 3,135 businesses, enabling 9,710 jobs be created and retained across the state's 33 counties. And then, last but not least, there is a community meeting with the Lannell Director, Tom Mason, for all New Mexicans, on Thursday, April 29th, at 5:30, and this would probably be pretty interesting to attend. It's, I think it's WebEx, and it's on that Facebook page. He will discuss laboratory, the laboratory's work, science research, economic impact, and the taking questions from the public, and there's an email there. Their next board meeting for North Central is going to be June 25th, and that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Rattone Public Service Committee Board of Directors meeting was held on Wednesday, March 24, 2021, at 5:30 p.m. Robyn Osborne, RPS Office Manager and Bookkeeper, presented to and approved by the Board of Financial and Statistical Information. Rattone Public Service Board President Captain McQuarrie reviewed with the Board Resolution 2021-4, Rattone Public Service Budget Adjustment. She also, along with City Manager Scott Berry, discussed with the Board a loan agreement between the City of Rattone and Rattone Public Service Committee for the buyout of the Twin Eagle Power Contract. City Manager Scott Berry reviewed and discussed with the Board a vehicle charging station that will be installed in the north area of South Street Park. RPS General Manager Dave Batino covered work activities being performed by the crew for the month. He also stated that 197 new meters have been installed for a total of 2,187 new meters installed and working. Mr. Batino also explained to the Board that the unit for generator failed to start automatically when switched over, and testing is being conducted to correct the problem. Also, there was no library board meeting this month.
All righty, thank you. Commissioner Chavez.
I do. Myself and Mayor Protem Schuster attended the Water Board meeting on April 20th. As of this week, Lake Maloya is now spilling, and a lot of water is incoming into Lake Maloya. We heard the charge-off list and the amount of $6,130 for the Water Department. We considered and approved the United Mine Workers of America and the Water Board Agreement till July of 2024. Water Board projects, the lift station is almost complete. The piping was laid under South Second Street and the freeway, and they also installed a, they also attained a brand-new backup pump. The Third Street project is totally completed. The spillway at Maloya, ECOM, had, they had seven bids for the projected project, and they renewed the spill permit. They will be working on the spillway until further notice. Ponyo is still ongoing, and, and they're, they had a delay in pulling the pipe under the, under the Ponyo Creek, and so they're still working on that. And the local audit has been approved by the state of New Mexico. And do you have anything more for the Water Department?
No. Please do for it, thank you.
We attended the Financial Advisory Committee on 4/22 and approved the third quarter finances for presentation at this meeting tonight, and that's all I have. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem.
I have very little, although I've been busy, but I did, I was able to attend the New Mexico Municipal Week District Meeting on April 16th, that by Zoom. I also had a New Mexico Regulation and Licensing Board meeting. There is nothing significant to report from that. The Center for Community Innovation has several things coming up, but there's a board meeting that they were hoping to get scheduled by April 29th, and I have not heard if that's a firm date yet, so I think I'll wait till after that board meeting to report what's going on within the weekend, and that's all.
All righty. For myself, Mayor's Task Force met yesterday with the Governor's Chief of Staff. Couple of things that I can talk about. Churches, as you may know, are now open 100% capacity per the Supreme Court ruling, so the state has complied with that. Tentatively, there is possibly a press release coming out tomorrow from the governor regarding possible changes in the gating criteria. We'll see how that goes. Not sure that it's going to happen yet. As you know, I asked the question, how can you go from turquoise to red? And everyone pretty much agreed it was an anomaly, but the math says this is where you will be. And it's kind of hard to argue with someone that's saying this is what the math says. But hopefully, if there is any news tomorrow, it will be good news for us. We'll just have to wait and see. Hopefully, that comes out tomorrow afternoon. One other thing that was asked for clarification, if you are turquoise, mass gatherings outside can be 250 people. That has gone up. They have made an adjustment in the health order, and they were asked point-blank about planning events for the summer. Can we go ahead and plan events? We got word from the Chief of Staff, he said, go ahead and make your plans. So, that's a good indicator that hopefully things are moving in the right direction. One of the other questions coming up was people trying to hire folks for the summer, finding it very difficult to find people that want to work because of what's going on with the unemployment. They are making more money staying home. Effective May 1st, it will be reimplemented to where you have to have three referrals that you went out and looked for a job. Yeah, so you have to get those three applications, and if you don't, then your unemployment benefits will go away, or go, or be reduced. So, that has gone into effect May 1st. Like I said, hopefully, there is an announcement tomorrow, and if it does come about, hopefully we'll have some good news for that. And that's all I, oh, one other thing. In regard to the senior centers, we were planning on reopening May 3rd. We have pushed that back a week now to May 10th because of our condition of being red right now. So, we have delayed that till May 10th. We're looking at a soft opening of May 10th. All safe practices will be in place in that, but we'll see how it goes. I know the seniors are looking forward to getting back. And that's all I have. All righty, item six, items from citizens present. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time may do so with items that are not part of the agenda right now. Anyone wish to address the commission at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into item 6A, deliberate match on approval of the April 13th, 2021, regular commission meeting minutes. Should have had a copy of them. Chance to review them.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes from April 13th.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 13th. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, report to commission by Billy Donati, Rattone Schuler Restoration President. Mr. Donati.
Good evening, Mayor Sigata, Mayor Protem Schuster, the commissioners, Mr. Barry, Desiree. Happy anniversary. Coincidentally enough, April 27, 1915, was the first live show at the Schuler Theater. So, it's 106 years old today, and she looks pretty good for 106. We all should look that good. Of course, hasn't been getting much use the last year or so, so Schuler has always been a great partnership between the city and the community, and we all love the Schuler Theater. We do. We all have a stake in it, and the city has always dealt with its responsibility and always put the Schuler Theater at the top of the list. Small rental fees, they take the upkeep and the maintenance very seriously. Schuler Restoration was awarded our management contract in 2015, and a big part of our duties is collecting the fees from presenters, and with the COVID-19, this is going to be a very short report, so. We haven't had a show since the Missoula Children's Theater Leap Day, February 29th of 2020. That was our last show in the Schuler. We had a full house scheduled for Los Lobos that very next week on May 12th, but that was about the day that things sort of fell apart. So, we're looking forward to Los Lobos coming up March 3rd of 2022. So, hang on to your tickets. As a matter of fact, a lot of people have. We had a sold-out house, and we've probably returned, what, less than 100, probably? Yeah, maybe 70, 75 tickets out of a full house. So, we're hoping. The first show scheduled right now is The Dance Connection. That's from Trinidad, and that's June 4th, our first show. We are sorry to report that the Santa Fe Trail School for the Performing Arts informed us today that they will not be doing the musical Annie, Annie, always Patsy Cline. They won't be doing that this year. Still a possibility, though, the youth theater show in July. Also canceled the Lip Sync in August. Still a possibility, and we do have their deposit and their rental fee from music from Angel Fire, so that's a good thing, and that's August 29th. That's going to be a free concert at 3:00 p.m. Also, Gate City Music Fest, that's Labor Day. Bellamy Brothers. We need a full house, so let's cross our fingers. Again, the city has recognized the Schuler as one of our most important assets, and you recently approved- recently approved an upgrade for the office just to the north of the lobby and we have dubbed it the Bill Fegan Kaleidoscope Room. It's quite impressive. We're looking forward to hosting live shows and showing off our Red Rose once again. Members of our community and the surrounding area also realize the importance. Because of that, we have a brand-new lighting system, state-of-the-art. Haven't been able to use it, but it's there, it's there. And recently installed with the help of our many, many generous foundations, Slope Prints, Whited Foundation, Macaron Family Foundation, Laird Foundation, Darden Foundation, and they all contributed over $57,000 in donations for that lighting system. Schuler also wants to, the Restoration wants to thank our other partners, including Raton Fire and Emergency Services. You know, they occupy a portion of the Schuler there and just recently helped us put up a new flag up on top of the Schuler Theater. Dave Little of Alpha Graphics, Raton Main Street, Raton Arts Council, Center for Community Innovation, Alan Ray Castellini, Don Romero, Tim Byrd, and on and on and on. We cannot do it alone. The Center for Community Innovation speaking of, we recently purchased an ad in the upcoming Raton Visitors Guide for the Schuler. We also paid for a new pulley system for the digital movie screen. The old pulleys were not, they couldn't bear the weight and so some of the cables were starting to fray, so we went ahead and purchased that, thinking that we would have movies very soon and we still might, but at this particular point, we're ready to go. And so, our wish list for the future, we would like to get a new mechanical lift for the loading door to better accommodate the big shows. We'd like to upgrade our front marquee out in front. Sometimes when you drive by the Schuler, you can't really tell it's a theater. There is no advertising marquee, so we'll have to work with New Mexico Historic Preservation and come to some sort of an agreement with them. Also, a connecting breezeway between the Castillo Building and the Schuler, some sort of food service, dinner and a show? Why not? We are also wanting to return to the days when the Schuler was the center for the holiday decorations for downtown. So, we're going to really put forth an effort for this upcoming holiday to decorate the Schuler Theater, outside and inside. Our members include our newest member, Zach Osborne, Lucas Jansen, and with us here in the commission meeting, Adela Garcia is here and Mike Kowalski is our Secretary Treasurer. I am the President, Bill Donati, and our mentor, Bill Fegan, well, he passed away on January 29th, although Bill would, he would ream me. He said, I don't want to, don't ever want to say passed away. Tell him I died. So, Bill Fegan, he was quite a, quite a mentor, his whole life dedicated to our theater and performing arts. The Renaissance man for the Schuler. We'll have a spot on the board for him forever and his title will be impresario, so. We love the Schuler. We're waiting impatiently for things to get safe and get people back in the doors and enjoying that wonderful, marvelous, acoustically perfect theater. So, thank you for your attention and patience and your support. Are there any questions?
None at this time, Bill. We appreciate everything you do down there. When are you going to resume activities down there radio-wise?
Well, we were going to until we went into the red and I would just tell the Governor that I don't know math. I can't do math, so.
I tried that yesterday. I told him I failed math, but it didn't work.
If, if things go right, we'll, we'll go in May. We'll, we'll see how things go. We'd like to open up at least by Memorial Day.
Sure. I think chances are we will.
Great, okay. Thank you again.
Good job, Bill. Thanks, Bill. Alrighty, Item C, deliberate and act on memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton, Raton Little League. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, the MOU that you have in your packet is typical of the agreement that we bring to the commission every year between the City of Raton and Raton Little League. I think we have some representatives from Raton Little League present here. It is a little different this year because of the unknown impact of the executive orders. We've talked about that several times tonight and so I think that Little League will tell you that probably have reduced numbers of participants this year. Their schedule is a little different. Typically, one thing that comes up at this discussion is the, the operations are, you know, we have a certificate of insurance and I think the organization will report to you that that's an expensive item and we want to make sure before we procure that, that, that we can indeed operate and so that may be something we talk about here. But, we have one other item and that is the sports related to Raton Public Schools are also out of kilter this year. I did ask the, the schools and you have a letter from Dr. Leanne Montoya, Raton High School Principal and Athletic Director, to update the commission on their schedule. Generally, I think that we can avoid any conflict between Little League and Raton Softball or Raton Baseball and everybody can be happy, but it's a little different this year. So, with that, Mayor, I, I will turn the floor back over to you and we do have the representatives here to address the commission.
Alrighty, good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
I'm Whitney Fernandez. I'm the league president.
And I'm Amber Sita Santos. I'm the vice president.
So, like Mr. Berry said, we didn't have too much of a decreased amount of registration. We actually did really good. We had about 91 kids register. I did make the decision last year, I really wanted to have, bring back Senior League. It's not going to happen again this year. The kids are going to be playing high school baseball. This year, we will not have softball either because high school softball. So, we are just going to have T-ball, minor league and major league. We'll have, we have eight teams chartered. I did bring a copy of the charter for you guys and like Scott Berry said, I am not going to pay the insurance yet until hopefully we change because it is pretty expensive. Once the color changes, we'll get that going and get these kids out and let them play.
Alrighty. Any questions for the ladies? I would just say it was also mentioned yesterday that if you're outdoors exercising by yourself, you don't need a mask. Hopefully, maybe by the time you guys kick off, that might stretch out to you guys while you're playing ball.
Hopefully. I really want to get the kids started by May 10th. That way, they have their 12 games in and qualify for All-Stars. That way, we can submit some teams into All-Stars.
Cool. Well, best of luck. We sure missed them last year.
Yes, we did too.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Good job, ladies. Very good. Would entertain a motion.
I will. A memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and Raton Little League.
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and Raton Little League. Is there any further questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, we have been asked to postpone, so I would entertain a motion to postpone that item.
So moved. A second.
A motion and a second to postpone Item D until the next meeting. So, no discussion. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Item D, deliberate and act on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board funding recommendations. The Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, Supercross Event and Phillips Broadcasting Radio Advertising. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board did meet on April 21st and they have submitted the recommendations, as you have mentioned, to the Raton City Commission for, for your consideration. I would comment that somewhat, we are anticipating that there will be summer events and we're getting out in front of the, the, the marketing part of that. And I don't think that, that that would be at all a waste of time. It's always good to market Raton. We are doing this with Lodger's Tax Funds that require that we put those funds to work. We have come off a time when, you know, we have not done much with the promotional side of the funds. Now, as we talked about before, the, the non-promotional, we have had several projects where we invested some non-promotional, but the promotional funds, we, we haven't done a lot. So, I think here, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board has sent these to you to get back out there and, and resume the marketing campaign for Raton. I'll just give you a few more details in which you had mentioned, Mayor. The recommendation from the Board is that 5,100, $5,616 be awarded to Raton Main Street. This is for radio ads, newspaper ads, brochures, posters, fire protection, sanitation and security for the 2021 International Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally. You do have Brenda Ferry here, present from Raton Main Street, and she'll talk about this and the balloon rally in general, I think is the next item that we have. Lodger's Tax Board is recommending the commission that $2,350 be awarded to the Center for Community Innovation for ambulance personnel and printing of rack cards with die-cut stickers for the 2021 Raton Supercross Race. That is a new event for Raton and we're excited about that event coming to Raton. And then lastly, the commission is recommending that $5,632.20 be awarded to Phillips Broadcasting for radio advertising in the July 2021 to June 2022 timeframe, the fiscal year upcoming. And so, going back to Item 1, that's the annual events line item. Item 2, contingency fund line item, and Item 3, radio advertising line item.
Alrighty, any questions for Mr. Berry? Entertain a motion. So moved to approve all of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommendations?
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board Funding Recommendations. They are for the Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, Supercross Event and Phillips Broadcasting Radio Advertising. Is there any further discussion? All, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on event forums for Raton Main Street Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally, July 3rd through 5th, 2021. Brenda, would you like to address us?
Sure. Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, Desiree. We're planning. We're moving forward. We have to. You can't just put these events on in one week, so. We have bids out right now for caterers, for our big dinner that we have currently planned to be in the convention center, but if we need to take it outside, we will. We have a board meeting tomorrow night and we're going to come up with a Plan B for everything that we're doing. So far, we have nine pilots that have sent in their registrations, so, and we've heard definitely no from three, so we may be back to 17 balloons, but it's still something. We're very excited. We're also going to be doing the 4th of July events. You will have a separate event forum for that as we're working with a couple of other groups, Raml Farms and so on, to put one big, huge community event on. And no need to reinvent the wheel because we are already doing it, so they need to just join in with us and we'll make it even bigger. So, it's going to be, so the pilot's reception is Friday, July 2nd. The fly days will be July 3rd, 4th and 5th. We decided to go ahead and have it on the Monday because a lot of places are observing the holiday on the Monday, so we will get people to stay longer. So, that's our plan. So, sponsors will be flown on the Saturday and Sunday and then on Monday morning is the pilot's competition and a lot of times, they'll fly sponsors and crew at that time as well. Our insurance and we're ready to go. And of course, we need volunteers, lots of volunteers, all you people out there listening in Facebook land. We need volunteers.
It's a fun event.
It's a really fun event. We'll put you to work. You can crew a balloon, you can sell T-shirts, whatever you need. We will be having the pancake breakfast out there every morning as well, so that's exciting. We're probably going to have a few tables under the.
Hangar.
In the hangar, but we're going to pull it outside to, maybe more people will feel comfortable, just, you know, spread it out a little bit.
Cool.
I know Chris usually gives this report, so I'm like, I should have prepared a little better.
Ah, you're alright. You're alright.
You had a sip pancakes.
Yeah, cool. I'll gladly appreciate your support.
Throw some sausage in there and definitely.
And toppings. We're going to have toppings for the pancakes this year.
Wow. What do you mean topping?
You can have blueberries or strawberries or apples or peaches.
And you get the bonus of the balloons.
Right.
Great. Any questions for Brenda?
Mayor, you can see that staff has reviewed the event forum. There is the insurance certificate attached and so you have the, no concerns from staff as far as the event. It's an event we're well familiar with and I think good planning has gone into this. So far, it's a lot of work to be done, but they have coordinated with Raton staff.
Cool. Right on. Looking forward to it.
I'll make a motion to approve the event forum for Raton Main Street Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally.
We have a motion and a second to approve the event forum for Raton Main Street Santa Fe Trail Balloon Rally this 4th of July weekend. Is there any further discussion? Brenda?
Fantastic job.
Oh, thanks.
Stay with us.
Any else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, public hearing, deliberate and act on ordinance number 1012, entitled An Ordinance Providing for the Registration and Regulation of Vacant Buildings Within the City of Raton, New Mexico. Establishing Registration Requirements and Fees and Providing the Collection thereof, Fixing Penalties for the Violation thereof and Providing or the Enforcement thereof. Mr. Berry.
Mayor Commission, in regard to the public hearing, you do have on your desk a, an email that I received this afternoon and it is a comment on the proposed action tonight. And there's a valid point in the email and I'll summarize the point here in that the person that sent the email to me and I have shared with you has stated that they think it's a good idea that we clean up Raton. However, they're suggesting that the city proceed with a construction and demolition facility and it, you'll recall at one time, we did discuss a C and D landfill to be constructed east of town. We have not talked about that for some time, however, there's a suggestion that as a part of the cleanup, there would be a demolition of, of, of some structures and that's, it's expensive to dispose of construction waste and we may have better cooperation with property owners and, and better result if there was a, a local option to disposing of construction and demolition waste. So, you have that comment sent to me. Interestingly enough, I was contacted by the Albuquerque Journal and they were present today and they had an interest in the Raton Proposed Vacant Building Registration Ordinance. I spent a couple of hours with a couple of gentlemen from the Albuquerque Journal. They asked a lot of questions in regard to the ordinance, told me that they had planned on, on running a story on that in the Journal. We, we looked around town pretty extensively. They talked to some local business people. They really didn't have a comment on the ordinance, just an interest in what we were doing here. So, that's what I have in the way of public comment. So that's what I have in the way of public comment for this action, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Don't see anyone else wishing to address us on this at this time. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I expect it pretty well already.
I would just appreciate the comment from the citizen about the CND. Has something that we could look for, that do it in the future?
It's a valid comment.
It is. I thought it was. I thought it was as well. That's something I might look into.
I actually heard that from a different person related to construction, that they would happily help out with that.
Uh huh, uh huh.
Okay. Well, this is an action item tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, is it introduce, approve?
We're approving.
Approve, okay. Approve ordinance number 1012, entitled An Ordinance Providing for the Registration and Regulation of Vacant Buildings Within the City of Rattone, New Mexico, Establishing Registration Requirements and Fees and Providing the Collection Thereof, Fixing Penalties for the Violation Thereof, and Providing for the Enforcement Thereof.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 1012. Is there any further comments?
Mayor, Commissioner, maybe I could just give you a quick rundown of the ordinance. Been a couple of meetings since we talked about this, and the ordinance generally includes a requirement for owners of a vacant building of, it would be residential, commercial, or industrial, any usage of building, but a principal building, to register that building annually with the City of Rattone. And of course, here at the city, we would have to develop a structure for database of vacant buildings for the registration process. There is a fee involved as well, and it's something that we talked about a number of months ago, actually. So the fee is laid out, and there's a distinction between buildings that are less than 10,000 square feet and greater than 10,000 square feet as far as the fee is concerned. Of course, a much higher fee for buildings greater than 10,000 square feet based on the presumption that they would have a bigger impact on the community. And then you see an accelerating fee through five years, and then the fee ultimately would be capped at that fee that we see on the fifth year from that point thereafter. And so the program would generate some funds, which would be used to pay for the programming here at City of Rattone and some involvement that the City of Rattone may expect in the enforcement of this ordinance. Now, one more comment, Mayor. I would say that the City of Rattone ordinance is different than you would see in other cities because we have a fairly strong existing dangerous building ordinance, and we have a fairly strong nuisance ordinance that would also apply. A lot of times, you'll see that incorporated in the vacant building ordinance. However, we would basically be looking at the enforcement of those two plus in addition to the vacant building ordinance. I would point out that the City of Rattone currently is taking applications for a full-time code enforcement and zoning officer. We will run through the end of May with that job opening, and so we're looking for a skilled person to assume these duties, and it would not be a portion of somebody's duty, as been typical in the past, that this person would be dedicated to this effort. And I'll hold up there and answer any questions, Mayor.
All righty. Any other questions or comments?
On this job application, city manager, do they, are you guys going to go outside of the area also, to the bigger cities, in case there's nobody qualified or that's interested in from this area, so that we can go for a bigger audience?
Mayor, Commissioner Chavez, we are trying to cast a fairly wide net and advertise this throughout the region. As stated before, I think it's just kind of a difficult time to seek employees, and especially skilled employees, but we are, as I would say, casting a wider net for this position.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Roll call?
Yes.
I figured it. I knew it was as soon as I said it. Okay. Desiree, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael Ann.
Desiree and I talked about it before the meeting, so I was preparing.
I knew it was, and I just ran right through it.
Almost got away with it.
Almost. We double-located. All right. Okay. Item H, public hearing, fiscal year 22, City of Rattone, interim budget. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, we do not have a draft of the budget or a submitted for the commission tonight or for the public, so this is really a discussion item. Now, this is an unusual situation. I would comment to the commission that we would be a little behind our normal schedule when it comes to drafting of the budget. However, we do anticipate that we will have the draft budget submitted on the schedule that's prescribed by the state of New Mexico, and so we will talk about this a lot in the remaining portion of April and May and into June. There is a date out there for submission of an interim budget, and that date is?
June 1st.
So we have some time to work on this. We will be putting this together. Now, I would not anticipate drastic changes to the budget. This time last year, we did discuss the concern that grocery receipts tax may really decline significantly, and we would have to look at that impact. I can state that we're a little under our budget for revenues, but we have not seen grocery receipts tax really fall off the table, which is fairly remarkable, given the fact that a lot of businesses were highly restricted over the last 12 months. We have seen some pullback. However, I'm fairly pleased with where we have wound up to this point. Now, I think that we're going into the '21 summer season. We have a lot of seasonal hospitality businesses in Rattone, and what happens during this summer is very important to the grocery receipts tax picture, certainly to local business. It's extremely important, and we have some unknowns there. So we'll go into this with still a little bit of a cloudy picture on what the revenue side is looking like. You know, two summers of having restrictions for local business would be very difficult to sustain a lot of these businesses, and we're fortunate that they've been resilient. I think that our community partners have really stepped up and helped out with trying to sustain local business, and so we're fortunate that way, but we're not completely out of the woods on that yet. But we will be discussing the budget, and I guess the summary of that is I would not foresee drastic changes to either the revenue side or the expense side of the budget going forward.
All righty, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry at this time? I would just like to commend the staff and the departments for their diligence this year and sticking to the budgets. You know, it's been a, could have been a lot worse than it was, but fortunately, we've had some things going on here that have kept us afloat, so I really appreciate your work.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I will pass that along to everyone here. I would like to acknowledge the great partnership we've had from Rattone Main Street, the Center for Community Innovation, and Grow Rattone. There are other individuals and organizations that have also contributed to this, but I would recognize those three for their partnership and their strong action during this last year. I think they've made a great difference in Rattone.
Absolutely, absolutely. All righty, anything else there? All right, moving on to item I, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-27, Springer Women's Correctional Center for the Purpose of Rural Economic Development in Northeast New Mexico. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, this is another one of those resolutions that we've talked about during the year, where I have taken the liberty of bringing this to the commission. I did get a lot of help from Desiree in checking some of the facts that you see in the resolution. Generally, my intent here is to support the facility in Springer as a job-creating and economic development support tool, and I really reflect on the fact that during some of Rattone's downturn, one of the things we lost were state-related funded institutions and jobs related to that. That does not help a struggling New Mexico rural community, and in Springer, this really is the building block, the cornerstone of that local economy. But we have a fair number of Rattone people that commute to this facility and work there or employed there as well, so it's more of a regional impact. And when I attended the Cabinet Secretaries' Meeting in Springer, there were representatives from all of the Colfax County municipal entities, the county, and also from Las Vegas. And there was, it was pointed out from the Mayor Protem of Las Vegas that a number of people travel from there to work at Springer as well, so it really is a regional impact. That is my intent in bringing the resolution to the commission. I would hope that there are some discussions with the state of New Mexico, whether that is at a cabinet level or an administration level, where even if there are changes made in the correctional facility, we can not devastate the local economy there, but find a way to use facilities for another task.
All righty, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I think that because of the fact of that they're shutting it down, that we should throw our weight behind it as a commission for the City of Rattone, I really do.
It's been, like Scott said, an economic driver in the Springer area and this area.
And it has been for years.
For years.
I did have a discussion with Mr. Berry about, you know, recognizing that there are some significant concerns going on there that need addressing, and, but the idea that moving that facility is not going to really fix those concerns, it just moves it to a different location. So, you know, I agree that, you know, working on repairing not just the building structures, but the inner, you know, inner relationships that are going on at that facility that are inappropriate just need better management rather than moving the whole facility. It won't really change the problems by moving it, and it will devastate us economically.
And with that said, we bring this to, like we said on previous resolutions, we're, there's not a hurry on this. We're certainly open to any wordsmithing that the commission might want to direct on this resolution. Certainly, we can work on this, and so if there's some additional thoughts or some additions or deletions that y'all would like to discuss, certainly, there's no deadline on this resolution.
But I feel you, you know, adequately addressed the concerns I had, so.
Thank you. I thought it was well thought out.
Yeah. I think it's really important that we support each other in our region.
Absolutely.
And whatever we can do to support that, not only for us, but, you know, for the rest of the area. Yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, for so long, we've seen these institutions that shut down in our community, i.e. the mine, and it devastates the whole entire community, so I think we need to keep all we can, all we can.
Absolutely.
So will this resolution then be sent on to the state after we make it, or how, what's, is that what happens next?
Mayor, Commissioner Chatterley, I would suggest that we would communicate this to the Cabinet Secretary of New Mexico Corrections. Also, she had mentioned that the governor had been involved in some of the evaluations going forward, so I would suggest we submit it to the administration, and then also, I would copy the town of Springer, who we have been in discussion with as far as the actions or the proposal from the state. And at the meeting in Springer, the Cabinet Secretary did state that there's not a firm decision. There's, you know, open to discussion. There are a number, there's an evaluation currently going on, so we're not sure of the final decision or what the schedule on that is, but we do have time to have some discussion.
All righty. Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-27, the Springer Women's Correctional Center for the Purpose of Rural Economic Development in Northeast New Mexico.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-27. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-28, Accepting FAA Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program, ACRGP, Grant Offer Number 3-35-0033-023-2021. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, in 2020, we were offered funding from FAA through their coronavirus response program, and we did accept that grant, and it had some specific uses, and primarily, we have assigned that to operational costs of the airport, which generally include utilities. And so now currently, we do have this offer, again, very similar to 2020, for the 2021 period. The grant agreement offer is $13,000 would be awarded to Rattone. Again, I would suggest that we would assign that to operational expenses for the period looking forward. What you would be considering is authorizing the city manager and the city attorney to execute the grant agreement through a DocuSign process online. It's all electronic, digital, submitted. So upon your consideration of this, I will get with the city attorney, and we will execute the documents and return those to FAA this week.
All righty. Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I approve Resolution 2021-28, Accepting FAA Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program, and Grant Offer Number 3-35-0033-023-2021.
No second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-28. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I did mean to read this to you in our transmittal letter, which I think you have in the packet, but I have this highlighted. It states, "An airport sponsor may use these funds for costs related to operations, personnel cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services, combating the spread of pathogens at the airport, and debt service payments." So those are the allowable uses.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-29, Approval of the Third Quarter Financial Report, Fiscal Year 21. Michael Ann.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. In your packet, you've got your financial report that's reconciled through March 31st, so this is our third quarter report that we will be submitting to Department of Finance. You'll see that our ending cash balance and our general fund operating account, less our 1/12 reserve, is $3,237,575. You'll see here in a minute, at the last meeting, you did approve the transfer to RPS, and so that'll be included on the budget adjustment, but it will be coming from the funds in our general fund operating. So once we make that transfer, probably at the next meeting or the meeting after, that'll be reflected in that month's report. So we do have adequate balance to cover that commitment, which was already approved. I've also given you the ending cash balances for our various funds, and I just made a note that... note that as far as our New Mexico Finance Authority loans that we have, the principal and interest payments are due May 1st. So most of those, we do have gross receipts pledged towards the repayment of those, and so they typically intercept those funds every month, and then it just accrues throughout the year, and then NMFA makes those payments on our behalf. So we'll be making those payments as of May 1st. And then as far as the gross receipts distribution that we receive for the month of April, this would be reflective of the February business activity, and it is typically, you know, a slower time of the year. So when we look at our analysis, it is somewhat lower than the returns that we get throughout the year. But year-to-date, we would be 2.6% below what our budget projection would be. So we only have May and June to finish out this fiscal year, so we are hoping that as construction starts to pick up a little bit in these next couple months, we might see some good distributions to close out the fiscal year. Let's see. So as I've reported before, you know, we have done, as the mayor recognized this evening, we have done a really good job working with our department heads. And so throughout the year, there are certain expenses that we can delay, and so we typically do that, especially when we saw that our small cities assistance was a little bit less than what we had initially budgeted. So we're working with our department heads. They've all done a really good job. Unfortunately for some of them, it could be salary savings due to vacancies that we have in several departments. So we might see an increase in overtime, and so we'll do maybe some budget adjustments at the end of the year to increase the overtime utilizing that salary savings. So we'll be working with the department heads between now and the end of the year to close out any outstanding purchase orders. We're also looking at the various grants that we have that may be reverting at the end of June 30th, so we'll be working to close those out as well. And then, you know, working on the FY '22 interim budget. So most of our efforts will be dedicated towards that over the course of the next couple weeks. And then we should be able to bring a pretty good working draft to you by the May 11th meeting, and then we'll just make changes from there. And then at the May 25th meeting, we would bring a final interim budget to you for adoption, and then submit to the state by June 1st.
Cool, very good.
So I also did put in your packet the gas tax comparison and then the lodgers tax comparison as well. So lodgers tax, we are still showing year-to-date about a 25% decline in our lodgers tax compared to the previous year. But hopefully, as our lodgers can start to, I mean, they had started increasing their occupancy until we went back to Raton this past week, so I think they're back down to 40% occupancy, and that's if they've completed the certification. So hopefully, we'll transition back to green, mostly turquoise.
Don't get too ambitious.
I know, but kind of gear up for that, the summer season, because our lodging establishments are quite busy during the summer, so.
I think we should see us go in a different direction shortly.
So hopefully, that lodgers tax revenue report will look a little different come the end of summer. But we, as you approve these requests, so we forgot the balloon rally, Run to Raton will be coming back to lodgers tax at the next meeting. They are anticipating their event, and then the motocross. So if we do look at our lodgers tax, I could point out what our ending cash balance is there. The lodgers tax board and the commission does have some funds to work with in order to fund these events, because we really didn't fund any events last year. So in our lodgers tax promotional fund, the balance right now is $209,000. So that does give us some funds to work with. And then, of course, in our non-promotional, we're working hard to finish up the improvements to the convention center. That project is wrapping up. And then we had the Schuler Theater project, so we're kind of trying to start to accrue those funds again. And then I think the city manager has some plans for some additional projects coming up that we could possibly use lodgers tax non-promotional funds for.
Cool.
Is there any questions?
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-29, approval of the town's financial report.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-29. Are any further comments? Desiree, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Sure. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Adam L., deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-30, budget adjustment number 12, fiscal year '21. Michael Lannan.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a fairly short budget adjustment. I think some of it's pretty self-explanatory, but at the last meeting, you did approve the RPS settlement, and so I need to move forward with creating a new line item, and I've just labeled it as the RPS settlement. And then, once we receive DFA approval, then we could issue that check to RPS. So the turnaround on the approval should be fairly quick. Also, under the library grants, I just need to do a small adjustment to reflect the actual amount of the state library grant this year, which was $9,495. And then we also have a co-op project, which just this past week went out to bid for asphalt crushing project, and so I need to add that into the budget as well. And so the 25% match that the city had approved previously was $14,723, and so that comes out of our gas tax fund.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-30, budget adjustment number 12, fiscal year '21.
I'll second.
A motion to adopt Resolution 2021-30, budget adjustment number 12, fiscal year '21. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item M., deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-31, adopting City of Raton Economic Development Strategic Plan. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm reflecting back to 2019, when we retained the firm Better City, a firm from Ogden, Utah, to help us with economic development strategies. And they had come to Raton, they met with a lot of key stakeholders, not-for-profit groups, citizens, businesspeople, and the commission. We had a series of workshops at the commission. We identified six focus areas that they would state are areas that we should focus on, prioritize. And at the conclusion of their fieldwork, I asked them to develop the Economic Development Strategic Plan for the city of Raton. So they delivered that in February, and I'm bringing it to the commission now to consider your adoption of that. In the report, it summarizes the work that they did in their evaluation of Raton, what our opportunities are, a strategy for going forward. And largely, we have worked on those strategies since 2019, and I think that we are seeing some positive results from those strategies. And so while we are working on this, we are bringing the plan to you for adoption at this time. Now, I have received a lot of requests from people in state government that have discussed Raton's situation with for a copy of the plan, and we have sent out a draft copy to various folks in state government. This would be the final plan. So the thing that we have worked on since the draft of the plan, the plan identifies the six focus areas, and then assignment of a task force that includes key stakeholders that have an interest in that focus area to really identify specific goals. And I think the most active task force we have right now is related to outdoor recreation. So we have people who are passionate about the outdoor recreation. We meet regularly. We focused on the trail projects. We've talked about that through the last couple of years. And of course, that's going to be a long-term effort with some short-term goals and then some long-term goals. But with the development of state park facilities in Colorado, there obviously is a much bigger goal that would take some time to accomplish, but really put southern Colorado and northeastern New Mexico on the map for outdoor recreation. We're also looking at similar work in downtown revitalization, and of course, there's been a lot of downtown revitalization, but we still have that long-term vision. So with the task force, we will identify short-term plans, medium-range plans, and then long-term plans, and continue to work on those. But we never quite get there because they're long-term plans, right? And so currently, in downtown revitalization, we're really looking at finishing that effort where our area can be eligible for new market tax credits. We would hope that eventually it'll be eligible for opportunity zone incentives as well. But we have talked to the Census Bureau and the U.S. Department of Treasury, and we are hopeful that within a year, there would be 60 vacant buildings in the downtown area that would be eligible for new market tax incentives. And of course, the building we've been working on for some time is the Golden Rule Store, which really depends on those tax incentives to get that renovation project going. So the developers there have spent a lot of money in the planning part, their engineering plans developed, but the key is that tax incentive. So we have some great partners in that, specifically, I've pointed out Raton Main Street, also New Mexico Main Street would be a key stakeholder in that. We're looking at additional work in the area of workforce development. We want to talk about that a little more with the commission as we go forward, improving the entrepreneurial environment of Raton, again, strategic planning going forward, and then business retention and expansion, and I would say I would throw recruitment in there as well. And so we've been very active in that. You did hear from Ramel Family Farms and their proposal, and that's taken a lot of work, specifically from our Economic Development Director, but with a lot of support from those key partners and stakeholders that we have talked about. And so I think we're seeing some success. And with that, I'll loop back around to requesting adoption of the plan from the commission. Now, this is a approximately 80-page plan, so I have not printed a bunch of copies here. I've sent it to each of you electronically. I've provided it to KRTN electronically. We want to get it out there. We will have this on our website following the action tonight. We will try to print some copies and have those available at City Hall and city buildings like the library for public review. But as we've learned in the last year, the electronic means, the digital means really kind of taken over, and we want to put it out there digitally.
Sure. All righty, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
60 of the pages can get you to fall asleep.
Yeah. I agree. I agree.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-31, adopting Resolution 2021, City of Raton Economic Development Strategic Plan.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution number 2021-31. Is there any further comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item N., deliberate and act on Better City Letter of Engagement for EDA Grant. Mr. Berry?
So Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for your consideration of the economic development plan. It's not the kind of a plan that we're going to put on the shelf and collect dust. We're actively out there following the recommendations and the strategies identified in that plan. And tonight, I have a request for the commission related to one aspect of that, and that would be workforce development. It may be really the most challenging focus area in our plan, and I have been working with our local groups, our Economic Development Director, private investment group as far as developing a workforce training program here in Raton. Coincidentally, a significant amount of funding has been directed to the EDA. That's the Economic Development Administration under the U.S. Department of Commerce. About $6 billion has been put into the EDA program. You may recall that in the fall, we partnered with Colfax County for an EDA application. We used our consultant, Better City, to help us get that application together, and we talked about a regional workforce development program. Commissioner Chatterley, in her report, had mentioned that the EDA really is well-funded again, and the cycle is very much open again. I would suggest to the commission that we reformat our request, and I'm here to report on what that might be and all of the elements going forward. So what I would envision with this current request is that we, number one, retain the firm Better City to help us put together an application for EDA funding, basically to get to the bottom line. They would help us with this for the cost of $3,500, and then, once the application is submitted, there would be an implementation phase, and they have proposed implementation services at the cost of $1,200 per month with an adjustable scope of work determined at the beginning of each month. What we envision, and this would be work that we've done at staff level, also with our key partners and stakeholders in town, and then, as we mentioned, some private investments that we hope to bring to town, is to develop a work-training program that focuses on film production and culinary arts in the Kearney School Building. Now, I've been in contact with Public Education Department, Raton Board of Education, and the New Mexico Public School Finance Administration about bringing that building to the project to use as matching funds in an EDA application. Under this scheme, the city of Raton would request a donation of the building to the city. We would become the city building owner, and then that process would work similar to the RMEX proposal that we talked about in the past, in which the city would issue an RFP for private development services, and we would expect to receive a qualified proposal that could be eligible for LEEDA funds. We would use EDA funds for renovation of the facility and development of the facility for a film production education facility and a culinary education facility. And we would partner with Santa Fe Community College and have formal programs in there through Santa Fe Community College. So there are a number of elements to this. It's going to take some time to pull all of those elements together. I've kind of laid out just a framework for you on what we would envision. However, as we've talked about with the commission, we are focusing a lot of our intention into Raton as a potential film production location in New Mexico, trying to take advantage of favorable film production credits that are available in New Mexico. And that would not be associated with this facility. That would be a privately funded facility that is still in the works, but bring filming and film production to the area as one of our focuses. So this would support that. This would hopefully provide... So this would support that. This would hopefully provide job training and job opportunities to local youth, not only here in Raton, but regionally, try to attract those youth. And as we've talked about, that's one thing that we've seen is we raise our kids up here, and then we send them off to get training, to get education, and to get jobs somewhere else. This is a strategy to try to keep some of our local talent at home. And I'll hold up there, Mayor, and answer any of your questions. It's an ambitious project.
Yes, it is. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I'm just wondering if we have a rough timeline of implementation, if we're talking a few months or a few years or what we're looking at there?
Yes, generally, Mayor and Commissioner Chatterley, we would try to prepare and submit an EDA application within three to four weeks. We would try to move forward with the public schools agreement within that time, a month to two months, prepare and issue an RFP, and ultimately come back to the commission, I would say, in the next three to four months with a response to our RFP. And then, as far as the operations in the facility, hopefully we could start by the end of '21 or early in '22. Well, we did talk about renovations to the building. The building's not in bad shape. I think that we could kind of start operations and be progressing with some of the improvements to the facility on the fly. So I would say that really, within the period of a year, we would hope to have functioning facilities.
My question was more about Better City, or would they be involved for that entire process? Is that what we're looking at?
I don't believe so, Commissioner. I would say that their engagement would be the application process within the next four weeks, and then possibly a couple of periods after that, a couple of months. I think that we could maybe look at a cap on their services of, I would suggest $10,000. And if we approach that cap, come back to the commission for further authorization. So I think it would be appropriate to mention that in this, and that would just be a suggestion I would give to the commission.
That was my question, too, is how many months would it, would we pay the $1,200? So, but you've answered it now that we could do it that way.
Isn't that similar to what we've done in the past, is kind of put a cap out there?
I think that's appropriate here, yes. If for some reason we looked at additional services, you know, come back to the commission.
We address that, yeah.
Now, the source of funding would be the Economic Development Fund, funded by the increment of grocery cease tax. So we've been accruing money in that fund over past months. We have moved to a part-time status with our economic development director, and so we do have the funds available to proceed.
Alrighty.
I'll make a motion to approve the Better City Letter of Engagement for the EDA Grant with a cap of $10,000 and authorizing Mr. Berry to keep that document.
We have a motion and a second to approve the service agreement with a $10,000 cap, authorizing Mr. Berry. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item O, city manager's report, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm going to focus on the status of public works, primarily during this report. We may mention into a few other areas. I would mention that work has resumed on the Great Blocks project. We would anticipate that the work will move along quickly, and by the end of the fiscal year, we should be at a completion point. Remaining work generally consists of the completion of the irrigation systems, the planter construction completion, placement of plant material, lighting improvements, and pavement sealing/pavement markings. So we'll see a little work going on on First Street there now, and those are the items that we need to complete the project. We have been proceeding with lighting improvements to the city building and the Raton Public Service Company offices. As you see here, these are the new LED lights that were installed last week. We are working through the building. City Hall is about two-thirds complete at this point, and we would anticipate being complete within a couple of weeks. These lights are much more energy efficient than the lights that we have taken out, in addition to the fact that the old lights were around 40 years old and really giving us a lot of problems. And so it's part of the modernization of some of the buildings that we've generally referred to, but energy efficiency is a big component of that. I think going forward, a plan for the city would be to look at additional energy efficiency measures. We have a lot of buildings, and we have old lights in a lot of those. So I think we can do some good there. We are moving closer to completion of the first phase of our Aquatic Center Improvement Project, something that we've talked about through last year. There is more work that will follow. However, this focused primarily on the mechanical systems of the pool, filters, piping, pumps, control systems. We have done some improvements in one of the showers. We have more improvements to complete, so we'll follow up with that. But we are intending to be prepared to open for the summer. We'll have to see what restrictions are in place at that point. However, if there are, we'll operate to the scope that we're allowed to operate to. So we are training staff. We're going through certifications. We are completing construction of this project, and there are some other elements that we would like to complete, and I'll report back to you on that. We did conduct a pre-bid meeting on our CDBG project. The official title is the Downtown Raton Infrastructure Project, affectionately called the Drip Project here in City Hall. Bids are scheduled to be open on May 4, 2021. At that first May meeting, we would bring those bids to the commission for your consideration. City of Raton, as Michael Ann had mentioned, is developing a request for bids for the asphalt milling and crushing project. That is funded by last year's cooperative agreement grant fund. We're looking at letting the Whittier Byron Street Reconstruction Project, that's the NMDOT Municipal Arterial Program, and the Raton Train Depot, in which we intend to improve parking areas and some drainage around that facility. So those are all currently bidding or close to being bid, and we'll come back to you with the results of that. Tomorrow, there will be a virtual meeting of the Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization. Jason Phillips is our top representative for that. I will try to attend. It kind of depends on how the schedule goes. However, this is an important meeting. There has been a call for projects issued by NMDOT for their transportation project fund, as we have talked about before. That fund was strongly funded by the legislature in the recent regular session. City of Raton has prepared information for request of funding related to the I-25 Freddish Road slash East 10th Street project and the Sugar Reed Avenue project. So we will complete some metals to Nertful and to DOT, and those are due at the end of May. We will talk about that heavily at tomorrow's meeting. I did share this with the commission. We have reviewed the results of House Bill 2. That's the General Appropriations Act of 2021, passed by the New Mexico Legislature at their 2021 regular session. Included in there, and I've highlighted, the legislature did appropriate $16 million for exit 451 interchange of Interstate 25 in Transportation District 4. That is the interchange that we've talked about frequently at Interstate 25 and Clayton Road, US Highway 6487. $16 million is a large appropriation for that project. I do believe that the project would be fully funded, and pending completion of engineering design work, the project would go forward into construction. And so I think that's good news, in that that is really an obsolete piece of infrastructure that has caused some issues with traffic, heavy traffic there, really not designed for that. However, we will have some disruption to business when that project takes place. That's going to be a difficult construction project. It's not too soon to talk about, you know, how we're going to support businesses during that time of disruption. I think that construction is probably about two years off. However, the appropriation has been made. I would throw in there at this time that we have been advised that construction will also take place on I-25 between Raton and the Colorado State Line. That construction is ready to go forward very soon. The contractor has announced that there will be lane closures involved. There will be disruptions of traffic and traffic slowing, and then the North Interchange will also be closed for an extended period of time during that construction. We're glad to see that project going. However, there will be traffic disruptions there as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Berry. One question I got a couple days ago. Is there any indication as to when they might remark Second Street?
My answer to that, Mayor, would be that DOT typically has an annual contract for lane markings. However, what they do not do is things like crosswalks, stop bars, parking stalls, things like that. I suppose they are looking at the local agencies to take care of those things. In our recent municipal arterial program application, I did ask for funding or their participation in funding to provide all of that. And those would be thermoplastic markings, not the painted-on kind, but the thermoplastic kind that are applied thermally and would generally last a long time. So I think we'll wait till July, find out the results of our MAP application. But I think that, one way or another, we would have to address that. Now, we put some pavement markings in our CDBG project, but we have a lot more to do generally in the downtown area. So I think we see how the bids come in on CDBG. We find out the result of our MAP application, and then we plan going forward from there. So, but generally, throughout the downtown area, we would have to have a plan for pavement markings.
Thank you. Any other comments for Mr. Berry? This time, I would take a motion to go into closed session. We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. We have a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mayor Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
We are in closed session, thank you.